I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of March 10th to order. It's 6 o'clock. So, our first order of business is to approve the agenda. Either approve as presented or any amendments.
I move to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the ayes have it. The second order of business is approval of the minutes. That would be from the February 11th meeting. So even if you weren't here, you can still approve the minutes. It's all done in good faith. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 11?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
I'll second it.
There's a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. So, the next order of business is that we need to open a public hearing. And that is for the 2020 Town of Manio. It's the Draft Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance and Maps. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
We have an open and a second on the motion. And so, it is time now for discussion. The first thing that we'll be doing, Melissa Dickerson will be giving a presentation about what this has been, this very important process and a very, very important ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Planning Board members and community members. I'm Melissa Dickerson, your Town Planner. Ahead of today's public hearing on the flood damage prevention ordinance, there are some things that I'd like to share with you regarding this text amendment and the process. First, I'm most appreciative to everyone who has provided their input in the process so far, especially the members of the Planning Board. Everyone's input provides opportunity to improve our systems and processes, and I thank you. There are related materials on the table, including my business cards. If anyone has any questions later, I'm happy to talk specifically about your property, your flood zone, as things will be changing. So, to the slides. The Federal Emergency Management Agency partners with states, tribes, and communities through Risk Mapping Assessment Planning Program to identify flood hazards, assess flood risk, and provide guidance to stakeholders in taking effective mitigation actions that result in safer and more resilient communities. This data is incorporated into flood maps, known as flood insurance rate maps or FRS that support the NFIP and provide the basis for community floodplain management regulations and flood insurance requirements. Through the Risk Map Program, flood maps are developed using the best available science and analyzed by engineering firms. The mapping standards are published, vetted, peer-reviewed, and updated continuously to ensure that they are aligned with the current best practices. The town began participating in the NFIP in 1977. The town also participates in the community rating system, which is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. The community rating system is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management activities that exceed the minimum NFIP requirements. As a result, flood insurance premium rates are discounted to reflect the reduced flood risk resulting from the community's actions meeting these three goals of the CRS. Reduce flood damage to insurable property. Number two is strengthen and support the insurance aspects of the NFIP. And number three, to encourage a comprehensive approach to floodplain management. The town's current CRS rating is a seven, which provides a 15% discount on flood insurance rates. This year, we will be conducting a community assistance visit where our scoring will be reviewed. And the goal is to score a six this year, which will earn an additional 5% total discount to 20% on flood insurance premiums. So, some important dates to review with you. The maps that are currently in effect were adopted in 2006. The preliminary maps, the new maps, were released on June 30th of 2016. So, it's taken us quite some time to get here. The final letter of determination was received on December 19th of 2019, which that begins the six-month window for the town to adopt the new maps and the new flood damage prevention The effective maps, or the new maps, and the flood damage prevention ordinance will be effective on June 19th of 2020. So, the required actions of the town, the ordinance revisions must be reviewed by the Planning Board. That's a regulation set forth in our ordinance. So, your review tonight and that we've been working on is dictated by our town's ordinance. Public hearings are required as part of the process. Additional hearings will be held with interest groups and property owners. And outreach activities are being held to stress the importance of keeping flood insurance coverage. This includes message on the water bills, stakeholder meetings with other municipalities and the county, and drop-in informational sessions. I held a drop-in informational session last week, last Tuesday evening, and three individuals came and we were able to interact one-on-one about the changes that are happening to their properties. I plan to hold more of those the week ahead of the Commissioner's public hearing, whenever that date is established. So, to give you all a visual of what is happening here, these are the current effective maps. The blue is special flood hazard area. And then I have a shot. That's the new map. So, we are losing upwards of 500 properties from the special flood hazard area. And here's a side-by-side. And, you'll notice, this is the lighthouse downtown. Lighthouse downtown, this is effective. This is new. Of course, the blue is the special flood hazard area. And you can see all the properties that are moving into a shaded X or an X zone. And I give you these visuals so you can have a good understanding of what the impacts of the maps are. So, the revised maps, when adopted, will be used for flood insurance rating purposes. Policies renewed or enacted after June 19th, 2020, will be based on the new maps. There is a potential for decreased flood insurance rates, and property owners are encouraged to talk to their insurance agents about the best possible rate for their property when the maps are adopted. So, we have some recommended responses to the maps. Of course, losing the amount of properties that we are that are moving out of the special flood hazard area, the town with the other towns in the county have worked together to identify some strategies so we have less risky building moving forward. So, the response that we have developed in the AE zones, which don't have much left, we've recommended and added three feet of freeboard to the base flood elevation or to the local elevation standard, which I will mention in a second. The local elevation standard is currently a target of eight feet, which is consistent with Dare County. I felt like it was important, especially on the island, for us to be consistent with what the county is planning. So, there's some consistency there. And I think you'll hear from the home builders that that's something that they have requested too. And this also requires that the first floor of the living area be elevated at or above eight feet, as if the property was located in an AE zone. So, the local elevation standard regulations are regulatory flood elevation measured at the bottom of the lowest floor. Utilities must be elevated above the regulatory flood elevation. Flood vents are required in areas below regulatory flood level. Elevation certificates are required. We have discussed the need for elevation certificates, and the policy consideration is that we have two. One, when the reference level is established, and then the second, the final, as-built. Lateral additions to existing structures can be added at the same base elevation in effect at the same time of construction. Remodeling, no increase to the footprint can be done at the existing elevation. So, we're not requiring those structures to be elevated. Other suggested changes. It is recommended that, in the ordinance, we require that non-conversion agreements be filed at the Dare County Register of Deeds. This is an agreement that will be signed when the Certificate of Occupancy is issued. The county currently has this requirement. And it does carry some additional scoring points for the community rating system as well. Excuse me. This means that the ground floor enclosures cannot be converted to conditioned space unless the local elevation standard of eight feet can be maintained. Two elevation certificates will be required, one when the reference level is established and the second for the as-built. The other suggested changes is that to require that all tanks, regardless of location in a special flood hazard area or X or shaded X zone that are not elevated, be anchored to resist buoyancy. And so, here is our proposed schedule, which has us here at March 10th to hold the public hearing, to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. If you all determine that you are not ready to do that tonight, that is okay. We have a built-in two-meeting buffer to this process. So, if there's something else that you all need to consider and come back to at your next meeting, you're able to do that, and it won't throw off the schedule. With that, I'll say thank you. I thought I had a slide that said thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. That's very informative and a lot of hard work that has gone on to get us to this point. So, this is a public hearing, and if anyone in the audience wishes to speak, this would be the time to do it. We have a microphone right up here. If there's anyone who wishes to speak.
Melissa's just waiting for me to get up here.
Could you please give us your name?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Jay Overton. I'm with Albemarle &amp; Associates. I'm a surveyor, engineer, and builder. And I'm here tonight representing the Outer Banks Home Builders Association. I'm their legislative chairman. For us, this process started just a few months after y'all received the maps back in 2016. The home builders, a number of us were concerned as builders, engineers, surveyors, that I'm gonna get Howe back over there one day. And what we were seeing was our concern, as y'all had concerns, that for years we've used the flood maps for insurance purposes, but we've also used them for building purposes. And with these maps, all of a sudden, we saw a decrease in the required flood elevation. So, what we did not want to occur was to have something that would encourage people to build at a lower elevation than what historically we've seen. And I know Manio, as well as all the other towns, had that same concern. So, it became very apparent that we weren't gonna get the maps changed. And let's just use the maps for insurance purposes, and we needed to do what we could to establish some local construction standards. So, probably for about seven or eight months, there was a group within the home builders that got together. We looked at historical data and so forth. And then, we started meeting with Donna and Melissa and other planners and actually have what turned out to be, I think, a pretty exciting thing to actually get both sides in the community, local government and folks in the private industry, working together to try to see what was best for the community. And Holly was telling me today that she's gotten some feedback from the floodplain managers that other areas are just kind of overwhelmed that we're able to have this sense of agreement and working together. And I've also heard back from Mark Martin, who is actually the state president of the Home Builders this year, that he too has gotten the same type of feedback, how great to have a community that's willing to work together and look at these things. So, I say all that just to kind of lead in. Many of you don't know who I am, and just to kind of give you a little bit of background. And I've been here for 32 years. I've seen every storm over the past 32 years. I've seen water three feet deep under my house at times. So, I understand the effects that we have in our community with storm events. One, I think, key issue that we've been dealing with, Howe would understand this readily, is the way that the building code and the FEMA elevation certificates have worked in the past. We find ourselves that we're doing elevation certificates with the old maps to the finished floor elevation of the building. And then, we find in the building code that it tells us that we can't have any white wood. Beneath that, it's got to be flood-resistant materials. So, you get this sense of, well, this is what you can do, except you can't do that unless you do this, this, or this. So, one of the things that's occurred with this local elevation standard, it's been defined very similar to, or actually, it's the same terminology as what we've used in the past for the DE zone. So, it's the bottom of that lowest structural member, the floor joists, if you will, or ductwork. So, that way, there's not this situation of inconsistencies there. So, that in and of itself is going to add a foot. So, where we're talking about a local elevation standard of eight, in the past, we'd be talking about that eight to the finished floor of the building. Now, we're gonna be talking about it at the bottom of the floor joists. And if that's the case, then you're at a nine. If you've got ductwork, you might be at a 10 on your finished floor. And we came up with this elevation of eight based upon what we've seen with the historical flooding. Surveyors have records, engineers have records of what we've seen. Does that mean that people aren't gonna experience some flooding at some point in time when we get some other storm that we just never anticipated? Just like with our wind zone, where we're looking at our design at 150 miles an hour. That doesn't mean that, you know, things aren't gonna blow apart. So, they're minimum standards is what we're looking at here. I would say that in our efforts across the county and the six towns, it has been interesting as we try to refine each one of these ordinances. And at the same time, the county and the towns sent the model ordinance to the state to get their concurrence. And we're still getting concurrences and non-concurrences as we speak here. So, as I was looking through y'all's ordinance today, there are some things in here that have to do with the floodways and so forth that, I know one time, we were waiting on some feedback as to whether or not we could take those things out. And I don't know if you've received it yet or not, but some of the other municipalities have. So, this document in and of itself has got some things that can be pulled out of it, which is great because when we deal with ordinances and we find something in an ordinance, we're always wondering, well, what's it there for? And if we've got something that has to do with a floodway, which we don't have floodways here, those are more riverine-type scenarios. So, we're dealing with that at this point. In particular, there's a couple of things that we've talked about at some of the other areas, and I know we've talked about within our meetings, that I wanted to bring y'all's attention that, Melissa, I apologize, I did not get back to you ahead of time, so I don't wanna spring this on you, but I am for the benefit of the Planning Board. On page 29 here, where it talks about flood vent openings, there is a provision within the elevation certificates that you can do engineered flood vents. And that's just a normal thing with one of the technical bulletins. And what we have been doing so that it's clear, this one is at the bottom of 29 where it says that the total net area of all flood openings must equal one square inch for each square foot of enclosed area subject to flooding. And then, we've been adding into that or engineered square inches per square foot. And what that is, that's a calculation that an engineer can go through and look at. This standard here is a very, very conservative standard, which basically says for every square foot you have of enclosure, you'd have to have one square inch of opening for your pressures that are created from the water being on the walls. Well, what you can do is you can run through a calculation that looks at the site, the elevation of the site, and then you can rerun that, and most of the time, you'll find that you would have to have less square inches of vents. And for some people, that makes a big deal of difference. And that kind of ties back up into just a few sentences above that. It talks about the enclosures shall not be temperature-controlled or conditioned. That's something that, for years, we've dealt with here on the Outer Banks. And we don't want to have conditioned space because of the concern for people converting them into livable space. But I know personally, my garage, if I have a dehumidifier down there, then I'm able to get some of that moisture out so my tools and things don't rust. There's been a number of people that have given examples of antique cars and things of that nature that they want to have in their garage, that if, and the other towns have actually adopted this, where they're allowing non-temperature-control dehumidifiers. So, we're pulling out some of the moisture, but that's not gonna allow someone to have a temperature-control setting where they would have someone sleeping down there. Let's see. Melissa, these things that were on floodways that I've seen and the others, I'll just give those to you if that's okay. I think the only other question, and I apologize for this again, but when we are looking at our AE zones and we're looking at our plus three or minimum of eight on the elevation, that's what we've got or trying to achieve county-wide. I do know in the AO, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this, but in the AO, we found in Dare County, we're going with the AO, whatever that, that's a depth of flow. It'll be an AO one or two that's above whatever the existing ground elevation is. And in Dare County, down on Hatteras Island, we're going with the plus three because they've got some areas that they need to be up that high. In Kitty Hawk, when we just finished looking at Kitty Hawk, and there, when we applied the plus three, it had them way above everything all around them. So, we were able to look at the AO plus one and then had the minimum elevation in there. And so, we still made sure we were high enough, but we didn't have a situation where we had a ground elevation that was seven, and we did a plus three, and we put somebody up at 10, and they were higher. So, that may be something, and I'll try to look at it and help you, but I haven't had a chance to investigate that. That's all I had to share. I appreciate y'all letting me come here and speak tonight, and I just want to thank Melissa for all of her hard work. She's been a pleasure to work with, as have all the planners.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Really appreciate all of the comments. I think it would be valuable for this group if we could have Melissa. Can you speak to some of the things that came up?
Sure.
Are they relevant to Manio?
Sure, they are.
Do you wanna close the, I'm sorry, what's it called?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. That's the thing we're doing right now. It is. Public hearing. Do you wanna close that?
There might be others that wish to speak. Can you make a comment, and then we can maybe find out if there's anyone else?
The engineered vents is just an oversight on my part. It should've been included.
Okay.
And I remember those conversations about the temperature control. So, that's fine. I understand. We have talked about it as a group, so those are okay. It's interesting, the remarks that I got from the state where they have told others that they could take things out. That note was not there for me, so I just left it in. But they can come out. I mean, it's six in one hand, half dozen in the other for me. And then, finally, on AO zones, we don't have any.
Okay, that's good. I didn't have a chance to, because we had that in there as an AO plus three in the description, so I was just assuming that we had something in that book.
I kept the language in there to be consistent with the county in case new maps come out, and we'll, of course, then redo the ordinance again, but just to keep it consistent with the county.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that. And there will be a time for us to have a discussion, just the Planning Board, about this later under old business or new business. So, I would like to ask, because this is a public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Have a question? Anyone else? Okay. I don't see anyone. So, I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Very well. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. All right. So, next on the agenda, let's see. We have, oh, we have another opportunity for public comment. This does not require a motion to open, but I would like to just tee this up for folks. So, we allow this public comment period for members of the public. They're invited to address the Planning and Zoning Board on any topic. So, public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual board member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person and five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded. Anyone? Any other comments? Okay. It appears that no one else wishes to speak, so we will go on to new business. So, the first, well, the only item on new business is a review of garage plans for 125 Dartmoor Lane, Lot 24, and that's in Marsh's Light. And just a little background on this. So, this issue was before the Park Committee for the first time February 3rd and then again on March 2nd. The garage plan was unanimously approved by the Park Committee, and the owner of the property had landed on a design of a detached garage that was very similar to others in the neighborhood, actually, right next door. So, I believe that's why it was recommended for approval by the Park Board. And so, now, it's before this board to have a conversation about.
If everything's in order, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the garage plans for 125 Dartmouth Lane.
Is there a second?
No second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. So, the next item of business is old business, and that is about the reappointment to the Park Committee of Amy Bennett. And you might remember, at the last Planning Board meeting, we had something like this come up where there is an ordinance that was established whereby if there are two consecutive meetings missed by appointed committees, that that is, that requires a termination of that individual from the board. However, there has been a process that has been followed, was followed the last meeting as well, where if the individual has an interest in continuing to serve, for example, their, the reason for their for example, the reason for their absence from a meeting, you know, was medical or something that was just impossible for them to miss, those would be very relevant reasons, appropriate causes, for not making a meeting. So we have this process where people can ask to be reappointed. Now, that has happened with this particular person, Amy Bennett, who had missed the two meetings. She has requested to be reappointed to Park. And she's been a very valuable member of that committee, according to all the members on the Park Committee. So they were supportive of Amy being reinstated to her position on the Park Committee. So it's up to us, up to this board, to make a motion to reappoint or not.
I'll move to reappoint Amy Bennett to the Park Committee.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would say, what is the pleasure then? How do you vote?
I see. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And there are no nays. So the ayes have it. So Amy Bennett is reappointed to the Park Committee. The second item under old business is this very important issue that we have before us. And because we've had a couple of new comments brought to this group, there are a couple of things that we can do. We can not move on this tonight, or we can postpone a motion to a date forward and relook at the couple of items that were brought forward. Or we can make a motion that incorporates, I think there were two. The engineered vents was one and the
Non-temperature-controlled dehumidifier.
The non-temperature-controlled dehumidifier is the other. So we could include those two items in a motion made this evening if we wanted to. But I think the first thing we should do is get a first motion on the floor so we can have this discussion. So do I have a first motion?
Yeah, I have a motion here. First item was the, there's the change from articles to sections. It was just a technical correction. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this technical correction to the flood drainage prevention ordinance, the ones that were highlighted on your page.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Men opposed? So we can open this for discussion. What is the pleasure of this board in terms of continuing with the motions, postponing to a date forward, or amending?
I think it's simple enough. We can work it out.
I agree. We'll just go through it.
At least give it a try.
The motion that's on the floor, we can just follow what's in the handout that we have to delete the words in Article 2 and replace them with Section 26.5 and delete the words in Article 5, Section B, Item 2, and replace it with Section 26-20 for non-residential construction. And then there's also an Article 5, Section F, and replace that with Section 26-4, floodways and non-encroachment areas. And one of the discussions that Jay brought up is, we don't actually have any floodways to deal with, but there may or may not be non-encroachment areas.
Very well. So the motion is the motion made by Jamie enhanced by you, but seconded. So are we all in favor of the first motion to approve the technical? Let's see. Jamie, would you like to repeat that again?
Just to make, take a motion to accept the technical correction to the flood drainage. That was just the, I said sections versus article.
Right. And then all I did is point out the specific sections under his motion.
Very well. So those in favor of the motion to accept the technical text corrections to the draft flood damage prevention ordinance?
Aye.
Very well. All right, that passes. All right, so there we have another item. We've had to break down the motions into a number of different, I don't know, pieces really. One was about the technical. That's an easy fix. The other was a motion, or is a motion, that included some text changes that were recommended, recommended, excuse me, individually by the planning board. And so that's why those, that motion needs to be separate. So
If that was the motion Hal was making, I'll second that.
No, actually, my motion was just all the actual individual pieces under your motion.
Right.
Then the second one, I can do that one. It's, I'll move to make the certification requirements that delete the text in the following sections in Pages 24 to 26 of the ordinance and Pages 47, 48, subsection C. And that is it.
So the motion that Hal has made is to accept the text changes recommended by the planning board. He referenced Pages 24 through 26. He also referenced pages on, changes on Pages 47 and 48 under subsection C. Is there a second?
Oh, second that.
Okay. Very well. So is there a discussion on this? Is there anything that might have come forward that we might want to add to the planning board suggestion? Do you feel comfortable with the venting?
Absolutely. And what I was going to suggest is, I have copies of the draft on the table. And, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll go grab it and we can work through that. And I'll just, I'll write it in so you all can see where it is.
Okay. All right.
Let me answer your flood vents.
If that's okay.
You know, I think it's always better to work on a motion that, without, you know, sort of, it's kind of like making sausage. But I think, given this, that there were these points that came forward, I think that we can do that during this time. Because it really is important for this motion to go forward so that the planning board can look at it.
There are those two items.
So we've got a motion out there. So these are moments will be made by, what was the motion? What was that, Jamie?
That was me, Jamie, seconded.
Okay. So we'll need a
Just a bit of motion to add non-t controlled.
Right.
Non-temperature-controlled dehumidifier, flood vents, engineered flood vents.
Here's the engineered flood vents. Just thought I'd make everyone. She's trying to find the language.
Here, I guess, right here, Page 42.
Okay.
Items one and item two. And then item 2A would be engineered flood vents. Item 2 is total, that area wants to be resurfaced. And 2, 2 sub A or something would be The working board, here, wants to resurface. Oh, you got, yeah.
Engineer.
Yeah. Parts that shall not be temperature-controlled or conditioned except for a non-temperature-controlled dehumidifier. That's subsection B of the line.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor made by Hal. And we've had a second on that motion. We've had some discussion and some writing going on. And is there an amendment? Okay.
I would like to amend Hal's motion. To include, on Page 41, non-temperature-controlled dehumidifiers may be used in enclosed areas and shall not result in the enclosed area being determined to be a conditioned space. And On Page 42, a minimum of one A minimum of one square engineered inch for each square foot of enclosed area for engineered, for an engineered opening.
Great. Is there a second on the amendment?
And then my, the second, yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. So I'm sorry.
Yep, that's what we're doing.
So those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, very well. So the ayes have it. Now, we're going to go back to the first motion that Hal made. Hal, do you want to read, just give a quick synopsis of that for our viewing audience?
It's to move to make the certification requirements and delete the following text, which was on Pages 24 to 26 for the handout and on Pages 47 and 48 in subsection C to delete the text.
Thank you for the reminder. So that was the motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Any other discussion on that motion? We've probably discussed it a lot already. So those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes carry it. So we have two past motions for the draft flood damage prevention ordinance. In order for us to get to the point where we pass this off to the Board of Commissioners, we also need a motion for our consistency statement.
I move that we approve the consistency statement that is included in our handout.
I'll second that.
So we have got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consistency statement?
Nice couple quotes from Melissa, if you want. That's new to me, the consistency statement. How long has that been a requirement to be included with zoning changes?
I think since 2015.
2015? To include the, adopt the consistency statement? Those are the thing. The last line, "is reasonable and in the public interest." Is that pretty standard wording?
It's lawyer language.
Yeah, basically, you had to consider it reasonable. So you just put a sign there that it is reasonable. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion for the consistency statement? So you're ready to vote? Those in favor of the consistency statement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No nays. The consistency statement passes. Our last motion is the motion of the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion for the recommendation?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Is there a statement to read for the motion?
Give me the recommendation of the Board of Commissioners. The planning board finds actions to update Article 26 Federal Emergency Management Administration flood damage prevention ordinance of the Town of Manio zoning code to be inconsistent with the town's land use plan per 1608383. In a unanimous vote, the planning board recommends that the Board of Commissioners amend the town zoning code with a new Article 26 Federal Emergency Management Administrative flood damage prevention ordinance with the incorporated changes.
That is the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? So let's take the vote. What is the pleasure of this board?
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion passes. Four motions for one ordinance. Great work.
Good job.
Really great work, everybody. So we have one more item on the agenda, and that really is just comments from board members. Is there, is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hal?
On the garage that we approved, we were given a proposed plan that shows a bunch of foundation details, size of the footing, the reinforcing steel in the footing, the slab thickness, and some other structural details. But one thing I noticed that was omitted on there that I hope the owner includes in their plan when they submit for building permit is anchor bolts. They need to be at six-foot centers within two feet of each corner, and they need to go down into the footing and tie to the reinforcing steel, but there's no detail on here about anchor bolts, and that garage will blow away without them.
That's a really good point. Thank you so much for making that. I can see that our town planner is
Make sure when they submit the
Writing all of that down.
For the permit that they have, anchor bolts added to that drawing.
And thank you for your expertise. It's so very helpful on this board. Does anyone else wish to make a comment this evening? Yes.
I was going to say, Melissa does a good job on that flood prevention ordinance. It was a, well, not flood prevention, but flood damage prevention ordinance. That's a hefty piece of work there you brought for us. Well done. Pretty far along.
We are all in agreement on that. The document alone is 42 pages. Isn't it other 41 pages? It's a hefty, hefty document.
It's 58 with the larger print.
Oh, 58 with the large print. We got the small print. Anyway, that's a very, really a huge undertaking, and one that is so important that we stay in this timeline. I also know that Melissa spent a lot of time with stakeholders, like the group of home builders who came forward tonight, and I really appreciate that as well. What we want to do is be consistent with other towns, you know, but also when it's relevant. But also, you know, we're all in this together. This is a big change, and one that I had heard about years ago with the change in the flood map. So anyway, it's finally coming to fruition. So that's a very, very exciting thing for all of us. Very well. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Any other board member who would like to say anything, make a comment before we leave?
I just have one quick comment to make, and that is, I so appreciate the videotape taping of the Planning and Zoning Board. It is so nice to be able to have that on our website that folks can go to. It isn't, it isn't streaming live, but it is usually on the next day, and so it's a really, it's a best practice in local governance. So I'm always appreciative that we've got this new, this new thing that we're doing. It's wonderful.
All right. So all we have left to do is to adjourn and recess, and so I call for a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned.